Good morning and welcome to the June 22, 2017 zoning board of adjustment meeting. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the agenda, there are speaker request forms on the left of the dais. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak to and hand it to the secretary. At this time, we would like to ask that if any member of the audience has a cellphone or other electronic device, that you either turn it off or turn the ringer to silent. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so the meeting is not disrupted. We'll start with public hearing on item one, approval of the May 25 zoning board of adjustment meeting minutes. Karen made the motion to approve the minutes. Steve seconded that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Hearing on item number two is now opened.
Good morning. Item number two is a variance request to reduce minimum side yard setback. The applicant has requested that the variance be continued to the July 6 meeting.
Steve made the motion to continue this item to July 6. Karen seconded that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I think we just need to adjourn then unless there's other items. All right, Karen made the motion to adjourn. Steve seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned. We'll now move on to the Rapid City Planning Commission meeting for June 22, 2017. Same items on housekeeping. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item, please fill out a speaker request form and leave it with the staff. And same idea on cellphones still. Consent calendar. Items one through seven have been placed on consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items: item three, 17 PD 024, and item four, 17 PD 028. The Rapid City Planning Commission's actions on these items are final unless any party appeals that decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the Community Planning and Development Services Department by close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items one through seven that staff would like removed from consent for separate consideration?
No, thank you.
Any items one through seven that planning commission would like removed? I've got to remove number five. And any items one through seven that any audience member would like removed?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Steve made the motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item number five. Galen seconded that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. On item number five, I need to abstain from this. Might be involved on a future project on this parcel.
Okay. Is it Galen? Galen made the motion to approve item five. Go ahead. And Steve seconded it. Any discussion on that item?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could we have that motion to read to approve with stipulations?
Yes. That was it. Okay, thank you for the clarification too. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Second? No, but second. How about any no votes? Motion passes, thanks.
You're back. I'm back. Thank you. Item number eight.
Item number eight is a final plan development to allow an oversized garage. Property is located at 4823 Cliff Drive. Property is a low-density residential district, as are properties to the north, south, east, and west. There is an existing single-family dwelling with an attached garage. From this aerial, you can see that it's a very heavily wooded lot and very heavily wooded area. Future land use shows it is suitable for low-density neighborhood, and Cliff Drive is identified as a collector's street on the city's major street plan. Site plan showing the location of the existing dwelling and attached garage. The applicant is proposing to construct a 32-foot by 40-foot workshop on that west side of the property with 45-foot setbacks from the property lines. The 32 by 40 is 1,280 with an attached garage, and the shed, the number goes up to 1,889 square feet of storage slash garage space. 1,500 is the maximum allowed. The applicant is also requesting an exception to allow a height of, for an accessory structure of 16 and a half feet in lieu of the maximum allowed height of 15 feet. This is not a very clear aerial of, or elevation of the proposed workshop. It is in keeping with the residential neighbor, uh, character of the neighborhood. It's a salt box design. This is a picture looking north into the property at the driveway. Sign is posted on the property. You can see that it's very heavily treed, and this is looking along the driveway to the house at the end of the driveway. And so that proposed garage is way back here up the hill and not, won't even be visible from the street, let alone from some of the neighbors. Looking properties to the south, south long Cliff Drive, southeast at the existing single-family residential, and to the east, and north long Cliff Drive. Based on the location of the proposed garage, the heavily wooded lot, and the intent of the applicant to use it as a workshop, staff is recommending that the conditional use permit to allow the oversized garage and the exception to allow a height of 16 and a half feet through the final plan development overlay be approved with stipulations noted in the staff report. Are there any questions for staff?
I've got a light up from Kurt on this one.
Yeah, you know, looking at that elevation view you had showing it showed 16 and a half, how come, you know, and I, maybe I misunderstand the, the height regulations, but how come it only goes up to halfway up the roof?
Based on the definition of how to measure the peak of, or the height of a building, it says between midway between the top and the end of the eve at the bottom. So you get to that midway point and put a line across, and that shows you where the height, where you measure from. If it was a flat roof, you'd measure straight all the way to the top.
Okay. Because to me, the building seems taller than 16 and a half feet.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Vicki.
So, we've had this discussion in the past, and it's a good one to have again today. We have looked at what other communities do, and this is being consistent. If someone is to have a very high peak on their structure, the walls are of a reasonable height, but then they want the, the very high peak on the roof, then half of that goes towards that height. So it does seem to be the compromise. It is a smaller encroachment than the wall space itself. So that has bode well with how we view residential structures too, so that they're comparable to each other, and it is being consistent with what other communities do.
Okay, well, I had just, I looked through the regulations and, you know, I couldn't see anything that pointed to that. You know, I guess if that's the way we've done it in the past, I'm not going to argue that, so. No other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
To find that information, if you look under definitions for height, that describes how it's measured. Kind of a unique place to keep it, but that's where it's at.
Thank you. I don't see any other comments up. Any questions? Oh, shoot, I missed the motion.
Yeah, move to approve with stipulations.
Okay, Steve moved to approve with stipulations. Sorry about that. I'd look for a second. Galen seconded that. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Here a few months ago, we had an oversized garage request in this same area. Planning commission discussed it at length. There were a couple residents in the audience that were concerned that it was being used as a place for garage sales. You may recall that discussion. And when it was appealed to council, council denied it. We, we thought about that when we reviewed this one. This is substantially different, even though it is in the same area. The vegetation and the topographic constraints do provide a significant visual barrier. The other one did not. The use of this structure was well-defined, and Fletcher cited that as a reason why we were supporting approval of it. We do feel it's different. We've not received any complaints or, or have any indication that it would be appealed to council, but I wanted to make sure that it was in record that we did discuss the other one in making our decision today, and that this one is substantially different.
Thanks, Vicki. We have a motion on the floor to approve with stipulations. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Oh, sorry. You gotta go to the other microphone. Can you identify yourself for the record?
Good morning. Russ Johnson from Russ Johnson Construction. I'll be constructing the garage. I had a question on the fire mitigation. It's something that I'm not familiar with. The vegetation would seem that it provides a good barrier for the neighbors not to see the structure, so I wondered if that portion could be waived.
Maybe we could get Chief Billings to provide a little explanation of that.
Or what, what that would actually include. Like I said, I'm not very familiar with that portion.
Sure, absolutely. The wildland fuels mitigation is, is an effort to reduce the vegetation that is readily combustible during the event of a wildland fire, which impacts the structures that are on, on-site. Typically, the way it is, it's a very simple process overall. Lieutenant Weaver in my office will come up and do an evaluation of the, of the property and, and help identify which vegetation should be removed, or if there is any that needs to be removed at all, and address that. So it still allows for screening and some of those components, but does focus on opening the canopy, reducing things like junipers and ground, some certain ground covers that are considered a real problem for us in the, in the urban interface, so.
I'm Julie Martin. I'm the one that wants to construct the shop. Tim Weaver came to my house after the Atlas storm, and if you look down the driveway, there's cedar trees. Cedar trees are combustible, juniper, and he wanted to eliminate all of that off of the property, which would not only open it up to, you know, all the neighbors, not have the, you know, seclusion. And I was astonished by how much he wanted to remove, and even though the city would pay half of it, I declined it because of the privacy that would be lost, not only for the neighbors, but myself. You have to understand, I'm on 2.4 acres. If you looked at that aerial view, you know, it's not any worse than the neighbors, and the stuff's been there for 50 years, and they want me to remove all of it. And so based on that, anybody could come up there and I, it's not a threat to the neighbors because it's, you know, on a couple acres, and so I would plead to the council to ask that to be waived.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Yeah.
The, the fuels mitigation process is incredibly important to maintain the integrity of those neighborhoods. It is those ground fuels that create the problem of uncontrollable fire spread from one, one property to the next. The primary focus is typically within approximately 100 feet around the buildings, and then typically the management can be adjusted beyond that. But the primary focus is, is around the structures themselves, and we've been working on the fuels mitigation process for about, oh, well, it's been the 18 years I've been here, but most aggressively in the last six to seven years throughout the western parts of the city to try to improve the fire resistancy of those communities or those neighborhoods and, and improve the survivability of those structures without manual firefighting efforts. So I would encourage you to maintain those. We'll definitely work with, with the property owner to find a, a happy medium in there. But the type of fuels described are the most volatile fuels we have in the forest floor that do propagate fire spreads, so.
So possibly instead of complete mitigation, you might do some trimming to enhance the property?
Correct, correct. With the focus area, typically that's referred to as like an ignition zone around the home, home or buildings on the property, typically within 100 feet, depending upon topography. If you're on steep ground, usually thin, much heavier in areas downhill from those properties because of the way fire spreads uphill and moves forward from there, so. But there's definitely ways to work through that.
There's ways to work through that. So if I'm understanding you correctly, you first said that any combustible tree had to be removed within honored feet of the property, and now you're saying that there's ways to move around it, and so if I'm understanding that correctly, I just, I'm a little confused between ways to work through that versus hacking out all the spruce juniper trees.
The hundred, the 100-foot around the homes, approximately 100-foot around the homes is the most critical area, and so we definitely focus on removal of, of the junipers and ground-based bushes. Not, potentially not entirely. Entirely is best, best route, but depending upon what, how the, the property's configured and how the, the remainder of the vegetation is configured on there really dictates how much should be removed and/or maintained. I can't speak specifically to your property because I haven't, haven't looked at that plan.
Can I jump in here? I apologize for interrupting. Is this, this wildland fuel mitigation plan, is that becoming adopted in the, I don't know how to put it, the code for developing lots that are in the trees, so to speak? Or is it?
It's been utilized or implemented for as long as I've been here. And it is provisions out of the fire code that we lean upon to do that, for mitigating of, of fuels. And there's, there's standard practices or best practices that have been accepted really nationwide. Our program has been recognized nationally for fuels mitigation within the urban interface. There's a lot of taglines or tag words within that, that group, but we focus very heavily on, on the aesthetics of the property, but also obviously the, we want to make sure that, that the fuels that are removed, the appropriate fuels are removed to, to ensure that these, these homes are survivable.
I have just one question, also on item number five on the, the staff's findings. I just, I want to make sure that I understand it correctly. Wildfire mitigation plan must be approved and implemented prior to the issuance of a building permit. Of course, as the builder, my primary goal is, while the building season is upon us, I'd like to con, conduct that project and get it done this summer. Is there any way to, if the fire plan is approved, instead of implementing it prior to the construction or the application of the building permit, could there be a way that we implement a plan over a certain amount of time so that I could move forward with this project?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chairman, if I may? Oh, I'm sorry.
The wording on the stipulation is to adopt and implement a wildland fuel mitigation plan prior to issuance of a building permit. It doesn't say that it has to be completed. So at the time that he's bringing in the information for the building permit, they can meet out in the field with, with Tim, identify what potential fuel issues need to be addressed, and Tim can indicate by that plan that it's been implemented, we can sign off on the building permit, and then as they're constructing the garage, they can then come in and complete removing whatever it is that they concur with jointly needs to be removed. So I think that we didn't indicate it had to be completed, just implemented.
So what is the timeframe on the completion of the implementation of the fire mitigation plan?
If I may, if I may speak to that. It really is dependent upon the, you know, how large the project is overall. You know, if it's just a handful of, of bushes or trees or trimming, mild trimming, or whatever the case is, that's a fairly short timeframe. As far as establishment of that plan, we can accomplish that within a few days of simply identifying what needs to be accomplished and then how to, how to accomplish that, so.
What would be the timeframe for the homer to, homeowner to complete that project?
I guess I'd like to see the scope of the project with Lieutenant Weaver's findings and, and see how it's associated with your building project, but, you know, typically within a few months, a few months to a few years. It doesn't necessarily address the entire two and a half, or 2.5 acres, I believe you identified that you had. It would be just simply around those, that home site itself.
So the larger the property, the more time you might give to implement this process?
Absolutely, absolutely. And the only focus may be around the home site itself.
Oh, so actually, the whole property might not be included. It might just be a, a boundary within the 100-foot around the property or the residential structure.
Correct. Typically, Lieutenant Weaver would identify a plan with the focus initially around the structures themselves, but the plan will address the entire property as far as best practices and the recommended findings of that, but the main focus will be within 100 feet or so approximately of the house or the homes.
So he might very well focus on the 100-foot around the house and then implement a, over a several-year plan of
Absolutely.
Removing or thinning some vegetation over the two and a half acres.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. Do you have any other questions? Thank you.
I guess I have one more, since we brought this up. What the, Chief Billings, who is the, is the fire department the only body that reviews and approves this? You know, people get used to trees and they like certain ones, they like bushes. If they disagree with Lieutenant Weaver's findings, is there a process to, to appeal those decisions?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, the, the focus is to work with the property owners and, and, I know Mr. Herr has, has had his property mitigated and has gone through that and probably can speak to that as well, but it's not, it's not a directive that, that all vegetation must be removed, but we're trying to remove it in a fashion that limits the fire spread and so forth. So I mean, there's a lot of ornamental trees or folks, or trees that, that are bushes even, that people love and have had, maybe they've been in the family for years, and we work around those to, to maintain those whenever possible. So, but yes, the fire department, and we work in conjunction with the state as well and the city forester through many of these projects. So there's a consensus on what's, on what should be accomplished of that.
Thank you.
That makes sense?
Yes. Rachel?
Thank you. So as I understand it, Tim, what you're saying, because it sounded like from the start that you're talking about clearing everything within 100 feet of the building, and that's not really what we're talking about, is it?
No, no, that's correct.
What we're talking about more is a collaborative process where someone comes in and says, "To protect your property, we're going to help you decide which trees and which vegetation would be best to be thinned."
That's correct. That's, that's exactly right.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Karen?
Thank you. I just wanted to compliment the fire department. They do an excellent job and they're easy to work with, and of all the departments that we have, I think they're the ones that save lives, they're the ones that save the forest, and this is more than just one property. It's, it's for the whole area out there, and we don't want to see a fire that would spread to neighbors and, and your home and stuff like that. So I think it's important that, that they work with the homeowner to get as much of that vegetation out as possible and still maintain your, the beauty of your home. So I just wanted to compliment the fire department.
Thank you.
I appreciate the questions from the applicants. Good discussion. We do have a motion on the floor still. Oh, John, sorry.
Another issue you might want to consider is how your house is rated for insurance. I recently went through this, and they changed our rating, and I'm up above, above you up on Penrose, and they took us from, what, a three to a nine, Tim? What was it? Well, a nine is what Johnson siding is for fire control, but it raised my insurance $2,100 a year just on my house over a 13-month period. Well, I went, I changed insurance companies because they consider fire mitigation and what you've done, and I've been doing it for about five years, taking big trees out and, and whatever on a staged plan and working with Tim and, but it saved me considerable money on my homeowner's insurance by following that plan. Thank you.
Hi, hi, I'm Dan Martin. I, I'm real familiar with the process because we had Tim Weaver come in during, right after the winter storm Atlas, and so I know pretty much what they're looking at doing, and mostly it's to do with the ladder fuels and, and there's pines and, and every, it's like 12 feet around each pine and a number of different things like that. So I'm familiar with what the requirements would be. We did look at that in the past, and we decided that we wanted to kind of control it ourselves and pick and choose, whereas we thought if a logging company came in, it would be, you know, it would be stripped out pretty quick. And we did see, we've seen neighbors, and I watch, I see a lot of properties, and, and so I, I have a good idea of what, what it looks like when it's all done. And, and it can look okay, it's just in our particular case, it's going to really bring us out of the, the real draw of the property is the seclusion and the privacy, and it's, it's just, you know, we, we love it, you know, we really like it. I just, we have one more thing and we want this shop, but I, I understand what we're probably looking at. We did opt out of it last time and, and we'll have to kind of consider that, but, but we hope that if they can work with us, we'll, we'll try to do the best we can. But I understand the need for all of it, I guess, too, so.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine.
Item number nine is 17 PD 027, a final plan development overlay to allow an apartment development. In particular, it's for a 50-unit senior housing development. Property is a medium-density residential district with a planned development. It's located on the south side of East Minnesota Street. We've got Parkview Park to the southeast, another senior housing building on this property to the south, and some offices to the west, and single-family to the north, and apartments to the east. Aerial view of the property shows that it's currently undeveloped with void of structural development. There's drainage which goes along this north lot line. Future land use, low-density neighborhood. Here we have the major street plan showing that East Minnesota Street is a minor arterial street, and the site plan for the proposed apartment building. It's one building, three stories, 50 units located on this area. This southwest portion of the property is shown for future development. We've got parking around the building and access from East Minnesota Street, which lines up with the street to the north. The applicant is requesting one exception, which is to waive the requirement to provide one landscaping island. If we take a look at their proposed landscape plan, we're showing a lot of landscaping provided around the perimeter of the building, as well as around the perimeter of the parking lot, which serves the intent of which serves the intent of providing that one landscape island. In addition, the applicant's indicated that, you know, in order to help with snow removal and as well as who these, this apartment complex is geared towards, removing that landscape island actually helps. So the stipulation of approval would be that the landscaping as shown be provided upon the middle of a building permit and maintained. Elevation of the proposed building, three stories, thirty-five feet. Again, measured to the median, mean of that roof, so it's actually gonna be thirty-nine. But when you measure it from, from the middle of the roof, it's thirty-five feet. Looking into the property, sign is posted. You can see some of the development, park use over there. Looking along East Minnesota Street to the east. Some of that, the other apartment building which is up, that's for senior living. And then where future development on that, on this property would take place. Looking to the west along East Minnesota, an office building and single-family on that right-hand side of the screen. And then looking directly across the street at the single-family neighborhood. Staff is recommending that the final plan development be approved with stipulations noted in the staff report.
Thanks Fletcher. Questions or comments from the commission? Darla?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one question for Fletcher, please. So what defines a, a senior apartment as opposed to just regular apartment dwelling? I mean, why is it, what's the definition? No kids? I mean, is there like ramps, elevator, I mean, is it, what makes it different?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Vicki.
So it is not an assisted living center, but it is housing for seniors. And we look at it as just an apartment development. They've identified it as senior housing. We add that to the report. It does let the neighborhood know that there's no need for a playground within the facility because it is for seniors. But I would assume that, um, there would be no children involved, but it would be marketed and opened up for anyone that meets a very minimum requirement. Age is probably the deciding factor.
All right, well, I just, I didn't know what we're looking at here, so thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
If it were providing a service, that does take on a different component. And we would bring that to you as an assisted living center. And there's a medical aspect to it and it does change the parking requirement to some degree. But we're looking at this as a full-functioning apartment building. I think it was great of the applicants to share that information because it does let the neighborhood know that there won't be teenagers and other small children in this complex.
Steve made the motion to approve with stipulation. John seconded that motion. Any further discussion on it? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion items, staff items?
Just wanted to share with the planning commission that we have had a planner position open since Robert left us. We went through two full interview processes, offered position to two wonderful candidates both times. And unfortunately, things in life happened and they both had to decline. We've reposted the position and we're starting over, so Fletcher and I are a little busy these days.
Well, we appreciate all the work. Seeing all their items, look for a motion to adjourn. Steve made the motion. Karen seconded the motion. I heard that. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? We're adjourned.